I was gonna, I actually was wanting to ask you your opinion about the restriction on the recreational fire.
Um, quite honestly, I think it's, it's a potential to cause a lot of confusion. I mean, for fifteen years, we had no burning whatsoever and then, you know, we started allowing recreational use, which we've got a lot of positive feedback from, and now we're gonna restrict it a little bit more. And I think, I think initially anyway, I think it's gonna cause a lot of confusion is my, uh, my opinion right now. But, you know, I mean, if, if council decides that they wanna continue with this, I mean, we'll just have to do an edu-, excuse me, an educational campaign and, uh, and get that word out there so that, you know, residents understand. We'll do, we'll do what council wants. We'll make it work.
I don't like it.
I haven't heard anybody in favor, well, except for the one gentleman that came and brought this up, for restricting it just to Saturday, or Friday, Saturday and Sunday. I'm okay with eleven AM to eleven PM.
I'm with you on that, hundred percent.
I'm not sure we wanna do the Friday, Saturday and Sunday only thing.
I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I've gotten a few emails on the opposed to restricting days, so I wouldn't be comfortable.
But I wasn't here when you guys passed this ordinance, so I guess I'm kinda relying on you guys, so it wasn't part of that.
I'm, I'm not, I'm getting the eleven to eleven. People are comfortable with that from what I'm receiving, but they, they still wanna keep it every day. They don't wanna just restrict it to the weekends. And, uh, I'm comfortable with that as well. I don't know where you guys are at.
Mr. Scott?
I haven't heard anything from anybody, so it's...
I haven't heard anything, but it just seems to me that if you have a nice fire pit in your yard, maybe a Tuesday night would work just fine, you know?
Well, I'm just saying, sometimes things happen and, you know, you got company coming in and you wanna show up, uh, something in your yard or spend some call any time, um, but...
We had a, uh, fire department had a fire pit down Thursday night at the, uh, Christmas open house downtown and, uh, it was very well received. People were having a wonderful time, so...
Yeah, I did get an email from someone, you know, suppose the Fourth of July is on a Tuesday, you know, so no fire pit.
A lot of things, sometimes birthdays, anniversaries and things like that. It's just, um... So, so where we at? Are we, uh, I know it's just a work session, but our, we're, obviously, we're not comfortable with, uh, the majority of us are not comfortable with the change on the, on the weekend alone.
Right, right.
So, but we are comfortable, we are comfortable with the eleven to eleven and we've been at the Monday through and not changing the date. Everybody's comfortable with that.
Yep.
I will make those changes, um, and get those to Kathleen tomorrow.
You're awesome.
And then, um, she can get those sent out to you before, in the council pack.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, next...
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. May I approach him? Uh, next we have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one fifty-nine mechanical code of the city of Burlington municipal code. Now, I'll call you, Mr. Tisland.
No changes from the previous reading. Again, just primarily going from the twenty-twelve to the twenty-fifteen edition of the mechanical code, uh, with residential code applying to one and two family, but no other changes or modifications.
Anybody have any, any problems with, uh, go ahead and bumping that up or...
It's okay with me.
He's good?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, next we have a resolution authorizing the removal of ten-minute parking signs and posts in the central business district. Mr. McGregor?
Good evening. I guess it went from afternoon to evening. Uh, these three resolutions here come from the Parking Advisory Committee. I don't know if you knew that that existed. It consists of five staff members, myself, Mr. Tisland, Mr. Nichols, Major Kramer, Chris Clemens, Steve Freevert, Becky Anderson, and then Zach James. And we're over, we're, we're going over the parking study and the recommendations and then trying to take on some of the recommendations and flushing some of those out and then coming with you guys, uh, to potential changes. The first one was the ten-minute parking zones that are in town. This map provided by Southeast Iowa Regional Planning, um, shows current locations where there is ten-minute posts and signs, uh, kind of varies between, and so this, uh, resolution authorizes the removal of those signs. That was one of the recommendations from the, uh, from the study. There is one exception, um, in Mr. Clemens's work, talking to the area businesses about whether or not they would like it or not like it. F and M Bank did say that they would like that spot to remain. So that, that location is not in the removal resolution for now. So a lot of these three resolutions come as just recommendations and they're, you know, more than able to be amended, changed to what you guys think, so...
Counsel, questions for Nick?
Well, for instance, that Beckman Dry Cleaners isn't even there anymore, right?
And, and some of them, only just the posts are there.
Right.
But for an official action to, to remove them, that's why this resolution...
Yeah, I remember McConnell's law having to... And so have these businesses been contacted or...
Yeah, Chris was able to contact all but one, and I don't know, don't remember the gentleman's name. But all of them, all of them besides F and M Bank said that they would, they'd be happy for them to go.
Post office was all right with it?
That's coming in the next resolution here. But they, they did, they wanted an adaption to what that was, but they're okay with the ten minutes going away.
Okay, good.
Okay, I see.
So you're removing all but one ten-minute spot?
Correct.
And some, but it's replacements that are different depending on what...
Correct, and that's these next two.
You guys good?
Good with the ten-minute removal.
So the rest of it, it's...
Yep.
These two, these, um, okay, I see the ones on Jefferson Street are not labeled, but, okay, I can see the green marks. All right, nice.
Good deal. All right, uh, we'll move right on. Stay where you are, obviously. Resolution establishing a thirty-minute parking limit in the three-hundred block of North Main Street on the east side.
No, I, I have, this map shows the combination of this resolution and the next one. The thirty-minute parking, um, is a recommendation along the, uh, the west side of where the post office is along Main Street, and that would change it from ten-minute parking, the removal, and then installing thirty-minute parking spots.
Questions?
That's on the east side of Jefferson, or Main Street, right?
Correct.
What's the rest of Main Street?
The rest is two-hour parking, so if you were to go across the street, it would be four-hour parking.
Four-hour parking for the rest?
Correct, sorry, I, it was two hours. It's, it's four hours.
Yeah, we've done away with...
It's four-hour parking, sorry.
That's okay.
And then on Jefferson Street?
Yep, then the next resolution, I don't, I don't wanna jump ahead if you're not...
Let me go ahead and read that, uh, where they are hand in hand. The other resolution is number six, resolution establishing a sixty-minute parking limit in the two-hundred block of Jefferson Street, so...
So it is, it's the four spots that are immediately off of Jefferson, um, that are ten minutes. There's been a lot of feedback on the need for some parking in that area, so to help that out a little bit, the, the advisory committee suggested an hour parking. And that's, that is the green spots you see off of Jefferson.
The block to the west of that is two hours? And the block to the east of that is one hour?
The one-hundred block of Jefferson?
Between Two Rivers and...
I believe that's also two hours.
Two hours, Jefferson, entire length of Jefferson's two hours from the...
So these should be the only one-hour spots? Do we have any other one-hour spots that are left in town, in the downtown?
I don't know that answer.
No, no. I don't believe so.
Not that I'm aware of.
Questions? Are you guys good with that?
Um...
I've got, uh, some questions.
Mr. Scott?
The, uh, I, I'm not, I, I can't imagine that the, uh, thirty-minute parking by the post office changed to thirty-minute parking is... reasonable option. I, I, the, the ten-minute parking gets people in, into their mailboxes and out. I think we're, I think we're gonna see some, people express concerns with that when it changes to thirty minutes and they can't get in to get into their mailbox. And the, uh, and I, Jim's pointing out the one-hour parking on the, in the two-hundred block of Jefferson. I think we, I, I wouldn't see why we couldn't make it two hours if we're gonna take away the ten-minute. Keep it consistent with the rest of Jefferson and I hope that we have someone working on plans to, uh, put additional parking in that block.
Yeah, it was gonna be my comment too.
Pardon me?
We do have those numbers worked up.
Yeah. Uh, I know I've seen some, some things kicked around, but, um, and I'm sure it would probably be, uh, two-hour parking when that, when, if that does happen.
For consistency's sake, I would suggest it probably would, but that's just me commenting off the cuff.
And we, the commission kinda went back and forth whether that...
Steve, come to the microphone.
Uh, we went back and forth whether that should be sixty-minute or, or one-hundred-and-twenty-minute. We landed on sixty because, uh, supply and demand there, there's, there's much less supply, so you would think that was gonna be greater demand. As far as the ten-minute spaces by the post office, that's really, uh, a monitoring situation. And Major Kramer, you know, he said, "There's no way that the, the, um, parking attendant can monitor ten-minute spaces." They're not gonna keep cycling back every ten, ten minutes to check that, so in a way, there's no, no purpose 'cause they won't be enforced if there's a ten-minute spot.
I, I can understand that, but people tend to self-monitor when there's a situation like that at the, at the post office.
Right, I think so.
So they know that there's ten minutes, they're gonna get in, get their mail and get out and, and not go across the street and talk with their insurance agent or go to the bank or whatever.
I mean, I'm just relying, that was, that was Major Kramer's concern, that, that if they remain ten minutes, basically, they're not being enforced now. They wouldn't be, they would continue to be enforced. And sometimes, you know, at this time of year, it can't take more than ten minutes at the post office, so...
You sure can.
I think part of the discussion there too was the amount of spaces on Jefferson in front of the post office that are generally not always filled, uh, that has two-hour parking there, that there's ample spot in front of the post office and there's not many spots on the west side of Main Street for any business on the west side of Main Street and the ten-minute limits the use for both sides, so that's just the general discussion about why this was brought forward.
But normally, well, I don't know, I can't say, but frequently when I come downtown, there's not many people parked on the two-hundred block of Main Street or the three-hundred block of Main Street, either one. So there's almost always parking spaces available there, at least when I'm down there, you know?
Um, I'll tell ya, I, I didn't know how to, to read this one, but I, I have to go along with, uh, uh, the judgment with that the parking study led, uh, led staff to on that and, uh, I'll, I'll roll with it. I, I just don't know how to, I just can't get my hands around what's gonna be the best thing to do. I, I know this though. I don't wanna keep, I don't wanna add a sign, then take a sign away and add a sign again, take a sign away. We don't wanna do that, so, uh, let's, let's get her done and let's try to get her in, let's try to get her in rock if we can.
You have at least two council members who don't wanna take those, change those signs in front of the post office?
I, I would be in favor of leaving them at ten minutes. I, I think I agree. And I, I don't think it's a matter of enforcement. I think, like Mr. Scott says, people pretty much tend to obey. If they're going to the post office, okay, I got ten minutes. Big, go in and out. Here we go. I, I tend to agree with you on that.
That's two. Was there a third? 'Cause I could rule that way, huh?
Yes.
That's three? Okay, then...
I don't think you're probably gonna get that done.
Yeah, so that would be yes to the sixty-minute and no to the thirty-minute. Leave that change as ten in front of the post office then? Is that where we're at on that?
Do you want it still brought forward for the next meeting for you to think about and vote down?
I, I would just assume you eliminate those, what are there, four or five parking spaces from that? From the, eliminating the ten-minute, just take those out of the resolution.
Out of the initial resolution to remove the signage?
That'd be the simplest thing to me, but...
I, I think that's the way we wanna go because we've already got three. I could go either way. I'll, I'll rule with the judgment of the council, so...
So would you like me to amend the resolution and, as, as stated, or would you like to amend that at the council meeting?
Amend it now.
Yeah.
Fix it.
Okay.
Were we going to up the sixty-minute on Jefferson to two hours based on the rest of Jefferson? Just for consistency? I don't know. I mean...
I, I might stay with the sixty-minute there just because there's such a small number of parking spaces and we're really trying to encourage people to get into that block and do things, aren't we? Isn't that the idea?
Yeah, you do have a shop that's in, I guess the one business that I can think of in that block that needs traffic flow is a coffee shop and they...
Right, yeah.
Typically, typically, that's a business that unless they're going and, going to other spots too, the hour is gonna work okay for.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We're good with that? So let's, let's have you a minute then. Uh, we'll leave it as ten minutes and then leave the, leave the sixty minutes in there.
Okay, and then I'll remove the thirty-minute parking...
Right on, right on, absolutely.
Nick, you wanna just briefly state when you might bring forward something in regards to parking on that block?
Yeah, um, we have a, we have a meeting this week, um, over the flood wall presentation on some of the structures and I was gonna hesitate until that conversation happened to see if we maybe wanted to bring some of those, um, ideas throughout the Jefferson corridor, because if we're gonna make a change to the Jefferson corridor, the time to do it would be, you know, when you're making a change. But after seeing the numbers that were put together for the addition of parking on Jefferson Street on that block, um, it doesn't amount to a whole lot, so, so if the financial change of, of adding that parking, I think is an easy and quick win. And so I would think within the next month, I could show you the numbers.
It's one of the CIP items that, that we're working on.
So...
No, that's good.
I like that, yeah. I think it's important to open that block.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Did you say you wanna have him come before we do the consent?
I just made it through.
Okay. Uh, next we have a resolution approving nuisance abatements. You guys good with that? Good. And this is the consent agenda. Next, uh, number two on the consent is a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the state of Iowa and the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning for STBG, STBG funds for improvements along Washington Street from existing concrete pavement just east of the Central Avenue overpass to Front Street on behalf of the city of Burlington. Mr. McGregor?
Uh, this is an application that we're trying for. Again, we, underneath the previous acronym, it was STP before, but the project extent goes from Front Street until the bridge abutment at the Washington Central Street Bridge. And then the next page that I have over there shows an estimate, um, updated for inflation purposes on the, uh, the cost that it changed to. Just underneath a million is, is the estimate, so nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. So we will sub, be submitting upon approval, approval to Southeast Iowa Regional Planning for the Washington Street project for twenty-twenty-one funding.
What are these improvements then? What are we gonna do?
It is asphalt overlay, uh, mill, mill and fill, and then also ADA compliance, um, with the company.
Thank you.
Yep.
And my term on that committee expired, so I'm not on that committee anymore, so...
Did you get paid in the last meeting, no?
Any other counsel? You guys good?
Not that it matters, but...
Tim, are you good?
I want the record to show that.
All right. Okay, uh, next is number three. It's a resolution approving agreement between, uh, city of Burlington, Iowa and Alliant Energy Incorporated for all li-, all-night lighting service at the west side of the alley between North Fifth Street and North Sixth Street, uh, sixty feet, sixty-three feet north of Valley Street. Mr. McGregor?
This resolution will approve the application process of Alliant to install, um, an LED light at one of their pole locations between the Nancy Navy parking lot and then our parking lot at Fifth and Valley. A lot of our fire department members use the Fifth and Valley for access and there's, there's very limited lighting. It will be a hundred-watt LED, so it won't, it'll put off light, but not enough to detour, um, movie nights that they have.
Oh, okay. Anybody have a problem with that? All right, good deal. They need to see two. Uh, next is a resolution approving maintenance and operation of public infrastructure for Burlington Crossing. Mr. McGregor, just stay right where you are.
I'd, I'll stick around for a little bit. Um, staff has reviewed the engineering and they've on, done onsite visits of the Burlington Crossing infrastructure, which includes sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and then the paving, which is only, um, legacy drive. The east-west road will be a private drive. Above here will, it shows the, the sanitary and storm sewer that we'll be accepting. That's new installation. There is some existing that's in the area that will remain. And everything has been proven acceptable, so I recommend, uh, acceptance.
So why is that a private drive? I mean...
Uh, for one, the width of the, of the drive is not wide enough to, to meet our code.
It was designed and installed as private.
Yeah, it, they, they had intentionally done it and I think part of the reason was just not knowing for sure how they, they were gonna use the layout of that property.
So you're, you're saying they might tear it up in, in the future and...
If they, I'd be surprised if they did. They, they had designed it more as a service drive to, just to service the needs that there, any potential businesses have built off of that. And I, I, I know they have pretty good recognition that people will be using that as a drive-through as well, but...
I have already.
Yeah, so have I.
So have I, all in favor.
Jim Davidson, you're bad.
A public road enhances some of the setbacks and also restricts on some of the driveway connections, so this allows them a little more flexibility there as well.
Okay.
Cool. You guys good?
Sure.
You good? You good? All right. Uh, number five, a resolution approving maintenance and operation of public infrastructure for Lawrence Drive. Mr. McGregor?
Um, this, this acceptance is for paving and sanitary sewer, um, just south of Mason Road. Currently, it's not a very long section. It's only about a couple hundred foot of pavement, so. Staff has reviewed it and it is acceptable, so I recommend, um, acceptance.
Okay, good.
You guys good? Excellent.
One more, Mr. McGregor?
Yeah, uh, number six is a resolution approving the Lawrence Drive extension acquisition plat. Mr. Tisland?
So this just plats that portion, uh, Nick just, uh, talked about. Uh, they have preliminary plotted the entire lot, but they haven't, uh, final plotted this portion yet, so this plat allows, allows it to be plotted, uh, and then have the operation and maintenance by the city, so. This goes hand in hand with number five, same, same area.
Okay, all right.
We're good?
Yes.
Okay, we've got a, a public hearing set for January sixteenth for consideration of volunteer annexation of territory up to the city of Burlington, Iowa. What is it, Mr. Tisland?
Uh, well, further discussion on it, but it's an area south, on the south side of town, between Fourteenth Street and Summer Street, south of Kestner Street.
Do you have plans for the requester to come to the next work session?
Uh, it's going through the planning commission right now and then, uh, I think in the following work session after that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that you will have a, the, the person requesting this will, will come and make a presentation in regards to what he's looking to do.
Which will be in January, then sometime...
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Cool, good. Okay. All right, then we have, uh, two discussion items. First one is a license plate readers?
Wait, wait, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
No, go ahead.
Uh, license plate readers, chief?
Pardon me?
Oh, that's no problem.
I'll leave it out here if you wanna take notes or questions. You're on there for a while, it's kinda complicated, but yeah, it's, you don't really have to bother. It's hard to understand. Thank you.
Before you start, could, could you comment on their two new officers?
Oh, yeah, I'd be glad to.
Yeah.
Uh, Officer Tyler Henning and Jacob Jenkins recently graduated from the academy, specifically Friday. So it was a really fun day. Got to meet their families. Actually, Tyler Henning's father is a state trooper in the state of Florida. Came up here in uniform to attend the graduation and his mother is a police officer down there. I think it was the city of Doral or something like that in Florida, but they're both police officers and got to come up and do that, so Officer Henning's first night was Sunday night and Officer Jenkins' first night was Monday night. But in the weekend report, it was kinda interesting that the shift starts at seven. Well, Officer Henning showed up at work at four o'clock and the sergeant on duty's like, "Hey, is there something wrong?" you know? He said, "No," he said, "I just wanna get here in time to get ready for my shift." And he said he smiled with from one ear to the other, so that's, that's exciting. Yep, they're starting a program and all's well, so, yeah, thanks for asking.
Yeah. Tell them welcome.
Yeah, oh, we'll do that, absolutely. So anyway, thanks for taking a, a little bit of time out tonight. I wanna kinda bring this forward in, in a form that's kinda, can be kinda comprehensive as, as a tool to kinda help us in the future recognize some, some criminal patterns, if you will, or patterns of behavior and identify some things that we would otherwise be unable to identify. And it's, it's quite the force multiplier, to say the least. I did quite a bit of research on this on other cities that are using it and I'm gonna kinda get into all that. But as we go through this, something that I wanna make very clear is I want the community to be behind this. I want the community to, to support this. And I'll try my best to explain that this really is about criminals and criminal activity. And there's no expectation of privacy to your license plate. I mean, obviously, that's why we put license plates on cars. But these systems identify the license plate and not the person in the car. I mean, you may loan your car to somebody else and those are things that we follow up at the time or later on. You know, the system's only gonna supply us with the information it can supply us with and then it's up to us to follow up. But I, I just wanna bring this out and I wanna make it very clear that, you know, if the community doesn't support it and doesn't want it, then we don't, that's the last thing we want. I mean, the community really supports the police department and, and I really enjoy that support. So as this moves forward, keep that in mind as I present this information. I wanna make sure that the compu-, the community fully understands what we're talking about and what we're gonna use the tool for. Okay? So, in light of not only recent crime, but really crime in general, I mean, we, we gotta start thinking of proactive ways to detour crime. And again, this is not the end-all, solve-all by any means, but it is a piece of the pie that I think could be beneficial, could help us as we move forward through, through this problem of increased violence. And that's really where this is going. And there's some other tools we can talk about, but, and, and I don't wanna get off topic here, but just very briefly, you know, we've been researching this system that's called ShotSpot. Or if a shot's fired, it triangulates and within ten feet can tell you where that shot came from. But as I analyzed the system and went through that and what it did and didn't do, really, in Burlington, if, if a shot is fired, we get called and we get called immediately. So it's a tool that's out there, but I don't know if it's really fits our community. It's not like people aren't calling us when a gunshot goes off. But I do think there's things we can do to improve our response. Because one thing's for sure, if we get one of those calls, seconds matter, not minutes, seconds. So, you know, there's some things maybe through the comm center we can do to improve that. So this is called kinda multifaceted and I'm trying to go about this with, with a capital improvement that has very minimal reoccurring expenses, but could maybe really pay some benefits down the line. So that's really kinda where I'm going with this whole thing. So let's just jump right into license plate recognition systems. And as an overview, I'm gonna talk to you about the system, what it's comprised of, how the system works, its benefits to not only law enforcement, but the community in general. How we're gonna use it or what our intent is behind the usage of that. I mean, policy becomes very important. There are several cities across the state that are doing it that, that have good policies. I've looked at their policies and we'd have policy in place before we ever implemented the system. So that's a big part of the usage, and then the cost. So what is a license plate recognition system? The technology or the cameras that are put onto the car can read these license plates literally hundreds and hundreds a minute. And what I'm gonna propose to you to get this program started is equipment is placed on a squad car, a squad car. Cedar Rapids has deployed two cars and are covering a lot of territory with two cars. We're not near as big as Cedar Rapids. I think we can cover a lot of territory with one. But keep in mind as we go through this, there are some cities larger in size than ours, but they're deploying what's called a fixed base system as well, where you can have cameras on entrance and exit points of the main thoroughfares that come into your city. So I'm not presenting that tonight. What I'm presenting is a mobile system to see if, if we're really starting to reap the benefits of... What I'm presenting is a mobile system to see if if we're really starting to reap the benefits that they say we're gonna reap. But as this discussion goes along, I'd be happy to talk more about those fixed base systems. So anyway, the cameras are mounted on police cars or they're mounted to structures. They're very popular like in gated communities. You live in a gated community, if when you pull up to that gate, if it doesn't recognize your license plate, the gate doesn't come open. That's another thing that they're used for in in larger communities. So I'll talk just a little bit about where the cameras are mounted and how they work. But the camera actually collects the information and then the information goes to a software server. And this company that I've that's used all over the state of Iowa that I took the time to research, they actually for a maintenance fee, an annual maintenance fee, they maintain the server. And they maintain all the license plates that are on that server that this camera is checking against. So it's something that we wouldn't have to add service base for or have IT personnel, especially with a mobile system. Now, fixed base system would require some some work on our IT side of it, and I don't know. I go to those IT meetings and I don't know if they have the time. And so that's why I'm kinda, after my research, I think that a mobile system is where we would need to start, so. And then the officers, if they get an alert, they act on that information. And just to talk about that briefly, again, the only thing we're recognizing is the license plate. But that gives us enough reason to stop the car, to really see if if this indeed is a stolen car. Is this car listed? If you have a warrant for your arrest, any vehicle that's registered to you would be in the system. And also, any aliases that we know that you are with or have a tendency to be with, we can put those plates into the system. So you know, if if a car would happen to pass the license plate reader car, as an example, you get an alert, you know, wanted. This subject that owns this vehicle's wanted. Again, the action the officer would take is stop the car and start the investigation. Cause again, people loan their cars, rental cars, it goes on and on. So that's just an idea of what they would do. So IR stands for infrared. And so if a police vehicle has two cameras that face forward and one that faces to the rear, inside of each one of those cameras is two cameras. And one's high definition and one's infrared. So infrared, the camera, that's a camera that would work at night, and that's all housed inside of one camera. I don't know if this little thing works, but inside there are actually two different cameras. So when we talk about the number of cameras, it becomes confusing. There's three cameras on the car, but that's really a total of six cameras, cause two cameras are housed inside of one. And so the camera, like I said, sees it, detects the plate, it sends it to the processor. The processor's what contains all the information on these plates, like I talked about, the ones that are wanted, the ones that are stolen. And then it would send the alert to the officer, and that's the verification application that actually goes back to the computer that's already in the squad car. So this is just a little bit of a picture that come off the website. And it kinda gives you two different pictures of a car. You can see the little bit of an overview of the car, and then it actually drills down to the license plate of the car. So as this patrol car is traveling through town and it's scanning those plates, all those plates are going into this information database. And more than likely, you know, ninety-eight percent of them are never an alert. There's never a hit, it just goes into the database. And then that's where you talk about policy. I mean, how long do you store those plates in in the database? It's not our information, we don't have the server, but Vigilant does. But by our policy, we can dictate how long those plates are stored in that system. And it's anywhere, I've seen anywhere from thirty days to three years. But what comes important about that decision is when you try to track a vehicle and where that vehicle's been over a period of time. In other words, let's say we have a shooting, somebody says it's a white Ford Windstar van. Well, we could go into the system and figure out how many white Ford Windstar vans that car has scanned. And from there, we drill it down to the plate number, and you go, well, yeah, but you might see a hundred Ford Windstar vans. Yeah, but that's more information than we had. And we start drilling that down to figure out, okay, there's a chance this is our suspect vehicle because of the people that are involved. And then once we know that and we get the plate number and put that into the system through a mapping process, it'll show us every time that plate has been scanned by date, location, which is driven by GPS. And then we can put together a pattern. In other words, how do we find this white Ford Aerostar van? How do we find that? Well, when we get to looking at the map and you see that it's it's been at this house however many times, well, that house is probably a good place to go start. You're look, and it just really takes all that time and effort out of putting it together. I mean, as an example of this recent shooting, we had a description of a vehicle, but that's all we had. And so where do we start? Well, as we get to looking at some some evidence, it doesn't take too long to figure out that, well, this is this may have come from a rental company. And so we check with the rental company and and all that could have been avoided if we had if the system and if the if the vehicle had been scanned. Because immediately, we're gonna know that, hey, we got five of those cars or ten of those or twenty of those, but it's by description to start with. And so it just it helps us narrow the field, and once we get the field narrowed, it'll show it without a doubt will show a specific pattern. So another example of how you could establish that pattern is you get information, somebody's a drug dealer. We establish that, yeah, they're a drug dealer, and yeah, they drive this car. So we go back and we put that plate information into the system, and oh, well, that's. Pretty soon, you go, oh, well, that's probably their route. I mean, it's been scanned here, it's been scanned there, it's been scanned here, there. And so you can see this force multiplier's starting to work. That's information we may or may not ever have. So it's just another example of how it could help us in the long run through investigation. And there's, we'll get into the short-term stuff that is far more right here, right now.
Does it? You know, you're talking about a a mobile? So does this camera, does it matter how fast your your squad car's going? It's gonna read, I mean, you don't have to slow down to twenty miles an hour or just bingo, it goes?
Yeah, it's been documented, it'll read plates accurately at a hundred and forty miles an hour.
Wow.
And hundreds of them a minute.
Wow.
That's the research I did, so. I mean, I I it's obvious the cameras work at a very fast.
Yeah.
When I wanna say frame rate. The cameras have to be at a really fast frame rate. And we and I started touching on some of these benefits, but. A a police officer on patrol, at briefing, you did a description of a of a white Ford Aerostar, since we're talking about that. And it was reported stolen this morning, and the license plate number is Iowa XXX zero zero zero. Well, for sure, you're looking for that, and any white Ford Aerostar would draw your attention. So then you go to look at the plate. But as you drive through a parking lot or as you drive down a road and you're getting a radio call, you're distracted, who knows, that white Ford Aerostar could go right by you. Or you're going through a parking lot, there's no way you can physically take all that in that fast, but that camera on that car is. And if it hits that license plate, immediately sends an alert, stolen motor vehicle, pulls up a picture like the one I just showed you, a plate, and it'll tell you exactly when you pass that vehicle. And so now, bingo, we're onto something. Or wanted. You know, we get local warrants at the police department, you know, fifteen, twenty a week or more for failure to appear. I mean, the laundry list goes on and on and on. And so, I mean, I think it helps us on warrant service, too. Now, do all these criminals, if you will, or these wanted people, drive vehicles that are registered to them? No, like I said, it's it's just a tool, but some of them do, absolutely. Or do they live with somebody that does? And we can create our own hot list. Most of this information I'm talking about comes from what's called the National Crime Information Center or NCIC. I mean, when an officer physically enters that into his computer, that's the database it goes to. And it also goes to what's called the Iowa system. And the Iowa system contains registrations, driver's licenses, any suspensions, barments, all those things. And all those plates are already automatically put into the database. This company that I'm researching does all that for us. We don't have to do any of that, but we can create all of our local hot lists, they call them. I mean, again, like I said, maybe the the drug dealer or maybe a missing person report that we took. That, hey, my daughter didn't come home from school, here's where she normally stays, here's who she's normally with. Okay, let's run all vehicles registered to those, amber alerts, you get those. I mean, the list kinda goes on and on as to what we could put into the list versus what's already in the system. Does that kinda?
Yeah.
Makes some sense? I mean, I know this this gets kinda complicated, but those are just, that's what the the database is checking against all the time. I mean, every time it recognizes a plate and that plate's readable, it goes to that processor we talked about. And that processor has all that information, and I mean, it would it would match it absolutely immediately if it's in the system. And and again, this is kinda what I was just talking about. I mean, it talks about the the investigative part of it. And how I can and make a traffic stop a lot safer for an officer. I mean, we already have some advantages. If you've got some time to get behind a car, you can manually enter that into your mobile data terminal and get the same information. But what if you don't have that time? Or again, that vehicle that passes you, that that plate reader's gonna catch that you wouldn't have caught? Or that vehicle that you're behind, that you really don't have a reason to stop it, you're just, you happen to be behind it and you get an alert on it? I mean, those are things or indicators to the officers that they they wouldn't have had before. There's no way they would have that unless they physically entered that information into the computer to get that feedback.
So is the cameras on at all times, basically, then?
Yes. Yes. And it, the alerts you have to remember are gonna come back to that car. So in other words, if if I'm on patrol and I happen to be in the car that has the plate reader system on it, I'm gonna get that alert. And so then by radio through communication to the comm center, I'm gonna have to let them know so the other patrol units know. I mean, there this this processor doesn't communicate with the other systems. It can, but as I did the research, there, as you get, it's like anything else, a false positive. In other words, you you get this hit on this plate, you alert another car, and it turns out it it was nothing. I mean, so what you don't wanna do, I guess, is be sending all these false alerts to every MDT in the county all the time. And as I researched, the other departments that had them, they they highly recommended that's one thing you don't wanna do. Limit it to the 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 car, the processor. In other words, the car that the processor's in. So and then just use your investigative techniques like anything else and go from there.
So would you limit who drives that car then, or is everybody gonna be trained to?
Everybody would be trained, but initially, yes, it would be it would be limited. I mean, Cedar Rapids deployed this almost a year ago. I think he said it was January in January of sixteen. And they still have the initial people they had trained running the cars, and they're moving in to train the trainer. I mean, the first thing you wanna do is get somebody that's really experienced with it. I don't think it'd take us a year, but I do think a couple months would be reasonable. And then have that trainer that's trained, train everybody else. Because I sure would not wanna limit that, especially if we have one, to one or two officers. I would want any officer on the department to be able to get in that car. And kinda when they go out, and I could see us doing this, they like to do, when they run their plate reader, mobile cars out, they like to have it a two-man car.
Yeah.
So if they get an alert, they got somebody running the computer that can run the radio, and then the officer driving can take care of what needs to be taken care of and.
That makes sense.
And with the reserve force getting to the point that it is, I could see us really utilizing our reserves to do that. You know, and since I'm on that for just a brief second, we just added up their hours statistically for the year, and the year's not over. They've they have combined put in over nine hundred hours.
Wow.
For the Burlington Police Department. That's a lot of man-hours.
Gee.
That's a lot of man-hours. So I think it's just another way we could utilize that program if we implemented the two-man car, which is something for ambushes and stuff we're talking about anyway, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. So here's some research I did. I didn't, I did not call each and every one of these departments, and they all maybe utilize the system the same or differently. I mean, some some police departments have the the fixed cameras, some have mobile, some have a combination of both, or some of them just use the databases that are created. So when I combine this list, they're not just necessarily using mobile units, they're using some combination of a recognition system. And these are the ones that that I saw when I was doing my research, there there could be tons more. And just to get an idea, I filled up this slide, and I'm sure there's a lot more, but this is just some of the major cities that I know for sure are utilizing this technology and have for several years, so. I mean, the technology's been around for quite a quite a while, and there's a lot of cities, big and small, that are using it. I just thought that was important and I pointed that out. So a cost estimate, and this would be for for one squad car. And we just, and as a matter of fact, we've got this quote, so this is this is really, really close to what our cost would be. To outfit one car, that would be three cameras on the car, two front-facing, one rear-facing, the managed server, the software, and the training and installation, and all the configuration of the system. It's twenty-one, eight, forty. And then the first year, the first year of maintenance or the use of their server comes with the cost. So that fifteen hundred dollars wouldn't be included in our first year, but it would be included on years after that or years going out. It's your, really, when you break down the system, like the the fixed part of the system, the cameras are about two thousand dollars apiece, and you need a camera for each lane. So I mean, primarily, let's look at like the Highway sixty-one corridor. I mean, if we wanted to know the vehicles leaving and the vehicles coming at the south end and the north end, that would be four cameras on the south, four on the north. And then if we wanted to do the same thing east-west, you'd have about sixteen cameras. But what becomes more complicated is you have to have a power source for the cameras, and you have to have some type of a Wi-Fi signal or a hard line to get this information back to the server. And that's where I was talking about, it becomes complicated with the IT departments. And I mean, you gotta have bucket trucks to install them and maintain them. And it seemed to me like, as I researched, that the fixed base really gathers you a ton of information, but it's a lot more maintenance, it's it's more manpower, it's it takes a lot more people and a lot more time to run the program. And when I kinda look at at what we have and our resources, I think that system could be difficult for us to do. And and so I bring forward a mobile solution to see if, how beneficial is this? I mean, Cedar Rapids is extremely excited about it. They they don't think they're utilizing their system to potential yet, but they've already netted several arrests. I mean, they're very excited about their system. And and again, as we go back to the violent crime, I mean, if if they have a a warrant of any kind and they're arrested on that warrant, I mean, that's holding them accountable. And and really, as a police department, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to hold people accountable to their actions. And this is just a tool, or it's another way that will help us hold people accountable. And at the same time, hopefully, start a system of deterrence as well. Knowing that, hey, the city has this technology, they're using this technology. And so maybe it starts to take away a little that feeling of, I'm anonymous and nobody knows me. Nobody knows I'm here, so I can get away with whatever I wanna get away with. Versus, oh, no, maybe they do know I'm here, and maybe they do know who I am. So I mean, I think that has a big level of importance as well. But I sure don't want you to think that this is gonna solve all of our problems, cause I don't think it is.
Right.
But I do think it's a tool that that we could use and help us down that road. So in summary, we talked about the system itself and how it works, the benefits, and how I think that not only the Burlington Police Department could benefit from it, but I think the community as a whole could benefit from it. How we're gonna use it, it's very important. I mean, I think the storage of data is something very important that we have to talk about. I mean, we need to store the data for a while to use it, but at the same time, we don't need to hang on to it forever either. And I think that 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 kinda helps maybe from a community aspect of, okay, they got all these plates, but my information isn't in the system forever. And that's all dictated through policy. Whatever we direct this company to do, they'll do. So I mean, the policy becomes a very big part of this, and then the cost. Again, it's a it's a lot of money. I mean, that's that's nothing to sneeze about. I think that's a lot of money, and I think it's something that as a whole, we just need to talk about. And just as importantly, I mean, the police department's reaching out for hopefully ways to kinda start to combat what we got going on here, so. And this is just one tool, I think, that could help us do that.
I think the community might support this. We're all concerned about the level of crime and any steps we can take to.
Yeah, and as I've done my research, it seems like overwhelmingly. Yeah, and as I've done my research, it seems like overwhelmingly, that's the way it turns out. But when, when you're bringing something new like this forward, I mean, people have a, a real feeling for their privacy.
Yep.
You know, and, and again, I would just, I wanna make sure everybody understands that this is license plate recognition.
Yeah.
And it disrecognizes a vehicle and that plate number. And so, that's kinda eases that feeling of the expectation of privacy, or it does to me.
Well, I, I like it, it sounds like a great idea. I know, I have people come up to me and say, well, what are, what are you gonna do about the crime? And so far, it's like, well, I don't know, what do you think we should do? And the options are obviously doable, or make sense. And I think this is a step in the right direction towards, you know, reducing the crime and getting those people off the street. So, I think, I think there will be a lot of support, there will be, obviously, those individuals with the issue on the privacy. But it's a, it's a give and take. If you don't want the crime, then just hang on to your license plate number, which you guys, you could do anyway, because that is, it's out there in the public, and you run license, you run plates anyway, so. I like it.
Counsel, anything else?
So what, what do we say when people say, well, it's just more Big Brother watching us here? How do we respond to that?
Well, how I would respond to that, again, is, is the license plate just identifies the car. And through work, it, it will then identify the owner of the car, but not necessarily who's driving the car. I mean, you could be driving a friend's car down the street, and the reader pick it up, and yeah, we have that information, that it's Bob's car, but we had no idea that Jim was the one driving it down the street. I mean, that, it's just, it's a system that just simply does that. If, if there is a license plate that's already in the system for a reason, your vehicle's stolen. I mean, I, I think that's a great argument, if, if you have your vehicle taken, and you report it to us, and it, it goes into this system, and it doesn't just go into our system, it goes into the system nationwide.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And so, you know, recovery time, obviously, there's gonna be an increase in that. I mean, wanted people, there's people driving around, I'm confident right now that that vehicle is registered to them, or somebody they know, and they're wanted, and they're not being held accountable. They're just out in, in our community, basically, doing what they want. If we really don't have a reason to stop them, we don't get an alert, they could be driving by us as we speak. So, I mean, is, is a, those are benefits, and I think those are very strong arguments as to the, this, this scale, this balancing scale that we use all the time, is, is Big Brother being too big? Or is Big Brother doing what he needs to protect us versus this expectation of privacy?
Yeah.
And I think that that, that pendulum changes, you know, over time, it just does. I mean, when things are good, and there's not much crime, then I think our expectation maybe gets a little bit higher. You know, and so as a police department, I mean, that's what we're trying to balance all the time. We're constantly trying to balance that need of safety and security, and how far are we gonna push the envelope? Versus making sure everybody feels safe.
Yeah.
It's a tough balancing act, and, you know, you, you take away your freedoms, you know, I mean, I mean, freedoms get taken away every time you try to legislate good, you know? Many time, you have a community or a neighborhood where it's not self-regulated, where there, people aren't looking after each other, and they have to bring in, just like you said, people are asking you, what are you gonna do about crime? Well, there, there's no rule that we can make, there's, there's no legislation that we can make bad people be good. You know what I'm saying? That, that's one thing you, you can't do. All we can do is strip away some of our freedoms to, because of a, because of an element that we need to tackle. So these are, these are things that people need to think about, how far do you go? To me, I, I don't like that stuff, I don't like any of it. I think it, I think we need to go back to the neighborhood policing, but what do you do? People wanna feel safe, and, you know, that's, that's a tough call to make. But I, I appreciate the fact that you guys are looking at other things, seeing what other communities are doing to combat some, some problems that we're not quite accustomed to. And I definitely am going to do a little research into this, I appreciate you bringing it.
You know, and I, and I, just hearing this for the first time, I don't really see this as taking away any more liberties than what we already have, it's just an improved tool for them.
Exactly.
To do what they already can do anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's basically like having a partner in your vehicle so they can run plates. I mean, right now, we can't have, I mean, we don't always, we aren't always able to have two officers in one vehicle so that officer could run plates. This helps the one officer.
Yeah, and that, to, that's a really legitimate point based on, too, a financial perspective. I mean, every time we run a plate to the system, even though it's a very minimal expense, it's an expense. I mean, we spend about twelve or thirteen thousand dollars a year. They estimate the number of times we're gonna tap that system, and so we get a bill based on that estimate. And if it comes out lower or higher, we balance that. But right now, that's around twelve or thirteen thousand dollars for us. But when the system, when the plate reader, it, it's just checking the database, it's not reaching out to the system. So it's running hundreds of those plates for nothing, because they're already in the NCIC system. Vigilant has collected all that information from the National Crime Information Center, and they keep it in the database. So it's testing against that database all the time.
So eventually, it'll pay for itself, I mean, really.
Yeah, well, one, you could never, like you said, run thousands and thousands of plates. And two, it's not, when it's hitting against that database, it's not costing us a penny from the, the state system. Now, the minute that officer checks and double-checks, sure, of course it would, but we're doing that anyway. I mean, that's just part of the investigation. That's a, that's a good point.
Anything else, Gays?
Okay? Feel free to call, email, whatever, if you have questions. If you, if you get on the internet and just type in license plate recognition system, it's, it's, the information will overwhelm you, so.
I hope, I hope you put that in your budget this, coming year, Chief, and what is.
Well, I haven't yet, because I wanted to make sure we got some feedback, but, I mean, we could put it in the CIP.
Best opportunity is to put it in your budget and bring it forward.
Well, the, part of the discussion that, that Chief wants to have is to, to get the level of support that there is, whether there's pushback to keep this from being something that really is pushed forward to do. But the, the extent to which you would do this, not just on the initial, but over time, is, it's a cost, it's a cost issue, too.
Yeah.
And you looking for funding outside of what we have?
You know, the, the DOT, at one point, at one point, had a program and did fund a few of these systems. But the departments I have talked to haven't been able to get grant money for the system.
How about local funds from, through fundraising efforts?
I haven't asked, but I mean, I haven't asked. Those communities have been really, really good to the police department.
You know what I'm saying, maybe we gotta wait till next year.
And I'm not putting out there that, that that's the only way we can do something, but we are, how much you can afford to do is dependent on, on funding. This is, makes sense to this type of an option, if it's acceptable for the council and the community, is, it's an easier one long-term to fund than additional staff.
Oh, yes.
Not to say that additional staff isn't a, a discussion that needs to be had, too, and I assume it will be during the, the next couple of months' budget process. But this is one, it's an easier one to find a way to make happen, when it's a, an upfront cost and a, and a smaller amount of recurring costs, as opposed to the other side, where you have the upfront cost and then increasing ongoing costs.
I just believe this is an opportunity to combat crime, and, and, and it's a system that'll make a difference based on what we've learned here tonight, and that's your charge. I mean, that's what we've asked you to do, is, is come up with ways and programs that are relatively inexpensive that will help you get that job done, and you stepped up and done that, Chief. I think this is an excellent opportunity for us. I think maybe you should go on the circuit and get it to the radio stations and.
Sure.
And talk to the public about it.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna get talked about. Make no mistake about that.
But no, no question, no question, and that's why I, I really wanted to reiterate the community's support. Because they're, they're awful, awful good to the Burlington Police Department, and I want to be kind enough.
No doubt about that.
And it's not like it's just another, another little toy, you know, it's something that actually looks like it does some value.
You look how broadly it's being used around the country, it tells you something, I mean, see.
Yeah, and I filled the slide, there were four more than that.
Oh, I'm sure.
Four more.
People keep asking what we can do on the criminal, here's another step forward.
Yeah, it's like I said, it's not the end-all, solvable, but I do think it, it'll be very helpful.
And I think it sends a message, before you even turn it on, to those that, they better be careful.
Can you talk about one more thing while you're there?
Yes, sir.
Shop with a cop?
Oh, yes, I already, what a great day.
I thought you'd smile about that.
Yeah, what a great day, it's, my smile just transfers from all those other smiles. It's something else, I mean, it's one of those things that just truly grabs you from the inside out.
Yeah.
I mean, it just does, and, and you, you would think that, okay, I have this opportunity, and I have this resource, it's gonna be all about me, and, and it's just not, it's unbelievable, like, hey, I gotta get something for sister, and brother, and grandma.
That's awesome.
You know, I gotta go get some soap, and we need these other things that we don't have, and it just, yeah, it's unbelievable. And the, and the people that just happened to be at Walmart at the time, and the kind things they say, and in support of the program, just makes it all worthwhile. And the one thing I need to, to say and make real clear, I mean, Major Grimshaw and Matt Rinker, I mean, Major Grimshaw spends countless hours on putting this together. I mean, he spent two days just making sure that all these kids had a ride, and the ones that didn't, we supplied them with a ride, and, which really did help. We have, the program's for twenty-six kids, and we got, this year, we got twenty-five kids there. Normally, twenty-twenty-one's good, so, I mean, all those efforts have been really, really worthwhile. And I, I'm so much appreciated in what he does, and how he's trying to, to reach the community in the different ways that he does. I just want you to understand that he's a very, very major part of, of what we're accomplishing when it comes to outreach.
Major's major.
Yeah, if, 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 if we didn't have the availability and the, to provide him with the time to do that, there's, we wouldn't have a tenth of the programs that we have. I mean, the after-school.
No doubt.
He's working diligently right now on a crisis intervention team for all the mental health problems we're having, and that's another discussion we need to bring forward. I mean, the problems, the calls for services that are being generated now, and, and what we're gonna try to put in place to combat that, but, and I'll, I'll bring the problem side forward, and he can bring part of the solution side forward. But I wanna get that to you, just so you understand what the police department's going through when it comes to dealing with mental health patients right now. It's, it's crisis, not only in Burlington, but across the state.
That's a fact.
So we're really working hard on access points, and how do we get people help? Because jail's not the answer.
No.
That's not the answer. So, and we'll get that information.
Thanks for bringing that up, Chief.
Anyway, thank you, Chief, thanks for all you do.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You mentioned Matt Rinker's role in that, what has he been able to help with that?
Yeah, he actually is the one that put together the five-oh-one-C-three, and kinda, Matt came from a, a background out west, I believe it was Californian, and they had the program out there, and he actually come to the department and said, hey, I've been part of this program, and, you know, I think it's a good program. And when the minute I heard about it, I thought, well, that's not a good program, that's a great program, and how can we make this happen? You know, Matt really stepped up to the plate, and Sheriff John Stone and Major Grimshaw went to work and got. It's not easy to get a five-oh-one-C-three put together, I mean, that takes quite a bit of effort. And Matt's done a ton of the fundraising part of it, and, you know, through his business, and, so, yeah. Just outstanding, kudos to him.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have any, anybody have any problems with the appointments?
I do have a question about the gentleman who's applied that lives outside of city limits evidently. That's not a problem, I, I assume.
What, what's this for? The tree advisory?
Yeah.
Yeah, it allows up to three non-residents, similar to the renewable energy committee.
Okay, I wanted, wanted to make sure that was clear.
Part of that was to try and get some professionals in that business that might not live in the city on board.
And the other question I had is, are you guys okay with the reappointment to the, the Regional Planning Commission?
I was very excited about this, and.
As long as you got your last paycheck.
I endorse you completely, Jim.
Mr. Teslin, you got anything before we close up? Counsel lady?
I'm good.
Counselor?
No, just to say thanks to the chief for getting that information on the White Horse to us as quickly as you did.
Oh, yeah, you're welcome.
No doubt, well done, well done. Mayor Protem?
I'm on KBR on Wednesday, right, Rob, is it? At nine o'clock, is anybody gone with me?
I can, if you like.
Great.
Okay.
I told you I'd do it in the winter. This is winter.
Well, I said he's gotta put his golf clubs on.
It's nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, correct, Rob?
Yep.
Counselor?
With some good questions.
I have nothing further at this time, Merry Christmas, though, and a Happy New Year.
City manager.
Not a lot, no.
I guess I do have one question for you.
We've been, this, this has been a, the last couple of weeks has been about putting budgets together. And as we get through the next couple of weeks, that's gonna be a big piece of the actual activity. There's, there, things do tend to slow down at this time of year, outside of that. This is, we'll have budget presentations begin in January. Do you anticipate special meetings, or are we gonna be able to handle this in work sessions, or? I would assume that the, we'll do it the same as we have the last couple of years, doing some alternative, Tuesdays, Thursdays. We'll try to avoid Wednesdays whenever and wherever possible.
Tuesdays aren't good either, so.
Oh, jeez. But, you know, if everybody else is available, that's fine.
We'll figure it out. Nothing else?
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, that is it, good night, thank you.
No.